So it is four o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk for the roll call, please.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Cable.
Present.
Councillor Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Sackle.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. We'll begin with our land acknowledgement. As we work toward reconciliation with indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Newash, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, March the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Seeing none, if one does arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. Item four is agenda additions or deletions. We do not have any this afternoon. Item five is our health and safety message brought to us by Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. So this health and safety message is regarding heating safety tips. So keeping anything that can burn at least three feet, one meter away from heating equipment like furnace, fireplace, wood stove, or portable space heater. Have a three-foot or one-meter kid-free zone around open fires and space heaters. Never use your oven to heat your home. Have a qualified professional install stationary space heating equipment, water heaters, or central heating equipment according to the local codes and manufacturer's instructions. Have heating equipment and chimneys cleaned and inspected every year by a qualified professional. Remember to turn portable heaters off when leaving the room or going to bed. Always use the right kind of fuel specified by the manufacturer for fuel-burning space heaters. Make sure the fireplace has a sturdy screen to stop sparks from flying into the room. Ashes should be cool before putting them into a metal container. Keep the container a safe distance away from your home and test smoke alarms at least once a month.
Thank you, Councillor Hudson. Always good safety tips for everyone. So item six is delegations. We do not have any this afternoon, so we'll move on to staff reports. We have item seven point one, which is report ED zero one twenty-three. The subject is the Community Improvement Plan, also known as CIP. It is the designated authority, and it's from April Marshall, our Economic Development Manager, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor before April highlights the report. I have Councillor Hawking and Councillor Fleet. April, please.
Thank you, your worship. As mentioned, this report is in regards to the Community Improvement Plan, or CIP, as I'll call it moving forward, and the designated authority. So we launched our CIP in two thousand and twenty, and this is, we've had great success since two thousand and twenty. This tool facilitates revitalization improvement within Hanover by providing a menu of incentives that promote that priority development that we'd like to see in line with our objectives and that of the county of Gray. As you may recall, with report ED zero nine twenty, we had designated authority to the Economic Development Manager, or myself, to act as the plan administrator and facilitate all the applications and agreements moving forward. The discussion today is, and this is more of a housekeeping item, just to get everything out there as far as what are processes for these approvals, is that with being the designated approval authority, our system internally here is that I vet the applications. There's a decision matrix that we put together, and then it's ran by our review panel, which is also our CAO and Building Services Manager, CBO. So the three of us ensure that the application meets all of our criteria, everything's in line, and we're able to follow through that process. Every year, we're also given a budget, so we know the parameters, and the parameters of the program are very defined as far as what the eligible expenses are, what the max grant is allowed, what percentage of expenses that is. It's very detailed and and very transparent as far as moving forward in what we can deliver in that regard. But with the tax increment equivalent grant, or TIG, as we like to call it, through our experience, we have confirmed that it's very important to have council involved through this process and be the approval authority. There's, it's very complex as far as what the ask is, what the improvement amount may be, or the the implications of the increase in assessment and what those dollar values look like. And it's not defined super clearly. It's at council's discretion. So this report essentially is just for us to be able to say, yes, it's working really well with all of our other CIP program streams, and the parameters are set, and we have our annual budget, and we're able to facilitate that process. But as we have and will continue to do is we'll bring all the TIG or tax increment and grants program streams forward for council's consideration and approval. So there are no direct financial implications associated with this report. It is linked to economic development and sustainable municipal operations. Oh, I should also mention Corporate Services is very valuable throughout this whole process and making sure that we stay online as far as budget goes. So the recommendation is that report ED zero one twenty-three Community Improvement Plan designated authority be received, and that council approve the recommendation process update that designates authority to the Economic Development Manager as the Community Improvement Plan Administrator with support from other staff and representatives of the Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Advisory Committee and Planning Advisory Committees for all CIP financial incentive programs, with the exception of the applicable tax increment financing programs. So I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, April. Council, discussion, comments? Councillor Cable.
I think your worship. Just to clarify, April, so will this adjustment then come forward in a future bylaw? Is that how it will get formally approved?
Yes, we are looking at updating applicable bylaws to reflect.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I'll call the question all in favor of report ED zero one twenty-three. That is carried. Thank you. Seven point two is report DCS zero seven twenty-three. The subject is the Provincial Gas Tax Allocation for Public Transit, and it's from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. I need a mover and seconder to put that on the floor. I have Councillor Sackle and Councillor Cable. Chris?
Thank you, worship. This is a report that comes to council every year as the host municipality of the SMART to accept gas taxes on behalf of the Ministry of Transportation for their use. So this goes, this covers nine municipalities that include Aaron Eldersley, Brockton, Chatsworth, Huron Kinloss, King Carter, Sogin Shore, Southgate, and Westgrate, as well as the town of Hanover. And it's been a well-supported service in Hanover over the last decade for sure. Mayor Patterson received a letter from an MTO Minister, Carolyn Mulrooney, on February twenty-third, advising that the amount for the fiscal period, April first, two thousand and twenty-two to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, yes, a whole year behind. And the purpose is providing this gas tax, as I mentioned, is for SMART. They are planning to provide up to seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars on behalf of these nine municipalities. We accept the money on their behalf and then distribute to SMART as required within the guidelines of the MTO gas tax. So this is to accept, to let council know that we need to pass a bylaw at the upcoming council meeting and to accept being the host municipality to accept those monies on their behalf and then distributed them as well. Financial implications is that it's funded through provincial gas tax for SMART, as well as our municipal contribution and user fees. And provincial funding is one of the larger portions of the revenue for this organization and is vital to its sustainability. SMART is able to utilize these gas tax funds to cover operations in up to one hundred percent of capital requirements. The town of Hanover itself is currently the largest municipal contributor for SMART, and we will be contributing according to our budget, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-three. And we represent about eighteen point eight two percent of the total municipal contributions for two thousand and twenty-three. So the recommendation is that this report, DCS zero seven two-three Provincial Gas Tax Allocation for Public Transit, be received, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to complete the letter of agreement with the Ministry of Transportation as the host municipality for the Soggy Mobility and Regional Transit Corporation for the public transit provincial gas tax allocation as detailed in my report, DCS oh seven two-three, and that council approve a bylaw at a future council meeting to enter into this letter of agreement with the Ministry of Transportation.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments or discussion questions? Pretty straightforward. We do this every year. I don't know if we do it every year at this time. Is that, that's normal? Okay, all in favor of report DCS zero seven twenty-three? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, item eight, correspondence requiring action. We do not have any. We'll move on to item nine, which is reports and correspondence for information. Nine point one is report DCS zero eight twenty-three. The subject is the two thousand and twenty-two council remuneration and expenses, and it's from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. Chris?
Thank you, worship. Again, this is an annual report that is required under the Municipal Act that requires a treasurer in each year honor before March thirty-first to provide to the council an itemized statement on remuneration and expenses paid in the previous year to each member of council in respect of his or her services as a member of council. The remuneration expenses paid shall also be reported for each person other than a member of council that's been appointed. So in our particular case, it would be the Police Services Board and the Library that provided additional funding. Attached to this report is a statement of remuneration and expenses. Linked to strategic plan is the municipal, sustainable municipal operations. The recommendation is that this report for council remuneration expenses be received for information in accordance with the Municipal Act. I don't think you want me to go through each line of what the actual report says unless you have any questions. I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks, Chris. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll move on. Nine point two is report DCS zero nine twenty-three. This is, subject is the quarterly financial statement for October to December of two thousand and twenty-two, and it's from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. Chris?
Thank you, worship. Again, this is something we try to bring out every quarter as much as possible when the financial statements are available, as it becomes available. As we know, we're working on two thousand and twenty-two, so I've done a snapshot in time. Keep in mind, those figures have totally changed since the date I just sent that to you. So the, the amount that's showing there is a snapshot of the financial position as of December thirty-first. We've also attached the check register. These are accounts payable listings of all the monies that were paid either by EFT check or direct deposit on behalf of all the organizations that we cover between October to December. And then the statement of operations currently showed a small surplus of about forty-seven hundred dollars, but then I also noted in there that there's a deficit of launchpad. It says fifty-six. They are now at sixty-two thousand, seven hundred for last year. There was a surplus in water sewer still at that point. Keep in mind, we are still billing for two thousand and twenty-two in March, so a lot of that goes back. So again, this is the accruals that happened. That's why I said I can't give you the exact amount every time. I can only take a snapshot in time. The police surplus was actually only forty-nine thousand dollars, so that's been changed. And our current deficit is down from eighty-six five to about fifty-nine seven at this point. We had some more grant come in, and we had some money to offset the outdoor rink from our reserves that we had council motion on regarding that. Again, this is a preliminary review of the current financials, and the reason that we're in a bit of a deficit on the town size is there was a huge expenses for vehicle equipment, fuel, and maintenance, about one hundred and fifty-one thousand over budget. Big portion of that was the greater, was almost seventy-some thousand dollars just to repair it. And it was about thirty-four to thirty-five thousand was more on fuel and insurance itself, just from last year over the budget. There, as I've said, there are still a few invoices, journal entries, grants receivable and revenues to be completed. And as we have a policy in place for operating surplus and deficit management policy, we will do the appropriate funds as utilized according to that policy. I've also attached a town of Hanover taxes receivable graph as of December thirty-first that shows that we have outstanding taxes of five hundred and thirty-one thousand. This is about six point eight percent of our actual two thousand and twenty-two levy of the towns portion. And if you include the amounts that we have to collect on behalf of the county and school board and DIA, we're at four point zero five. Anything under ten percent is considered exceptional for tax receivable at year end. This again is a quarterly review, and it will change. You'll get the final results once the financial statements are completed. But you needed to see this in time so that we can show you all the checks that have gone through for the last three months. So unless you have any particular questions, this is a link to the Sustainable Municipal Operations, and this is the recommendation that you accept this report for your information.
Thanks, Chris. Anything, any questions? Councillor Hudson?
Thank you, worship. I just had one question regarding, it's on page one eighty-seven, parks and outdoor facilities, and then below that it lists specific outdoor parks. So I'm not sure what the first one is. Is zero one dash seven one zero zero?
That's all the parks and outdoor facilities. Through you, your worship, sorry about that. So in three months, we spent over two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. You've got to remember, there was also huge park expenses, almost one hundred and sixty-nine thousand for the Optimist and the Kinsman Park expenses that took place during that time. And then the rest will be, seventy-one oh one will be the ballparks. That's the amount of money that was spent specifically just for the ballpark area. And these are, everything that you're showing there, zero one represents the town of Hanover. Everything else, the next four represents a department. So anything that starts with seven is recreation and culture items. And then if you go further down, and Launchpad is at the end, anything that starts with six one is considered the Organization for Launchpads. So they have three different areas, Launchpad Youth, Adult Programs, and their Entrepreneur Ice Cream Truck. So that's all the different departments. So these amounts here we're showing on the accounts payable, this is what's happened over three months' time, the total amount of checks, EFT or direct deposits that have happened.
Thank you.
Other comments or discussion? Councillor Fleet?
Thank you, Chris, for your update. The deficit at Launchpad of fifty-two thousand, like, we've okayed the hundred thousand for the coming year. Does that fifty-two thousand get subtracted off the hundred thousand, or how are we going to deal with that deficit?
Through you, your worship. It is my understanding they're still working on their budget. We had talked about it. There is, it's very difficult to pay that all back within one year. So there was a talk of the town would have a three-year repayment plan that they would put in place. And then we would, if we do the hundred thousand, then we would give them a hundred thousand and then take off thirty-three thousand or whatever the amount would be, and that would go over for the next three years, continue that way. But again, we're waiting on them. I need some recommendation from the board saying that's the direction they want to do, because council would have to be the ultimate one to say that's what you really would like to see happen. Otherwise, they're, they're looking at, like, I think it's a hundred and, hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two right now between the last year's prior years and two thousand and twenty-two's deficit. So you'll want to use their, I've asked them to use their reserves as well to bring that down to around the ninety-three thousand, and then split that over three years, so thirty-one thousand payback. But again, I'm at the mercy of waiting for them to get that.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments, questions? Councillor Cable?
I think, your worship. I'm just wondering, Chris, going forward, how do we kind of try to mitigate that type of a situation going forward? Like, how do we ensure that we're not going to see a similar deficit position in future years? Like, am I understanding correctly that right now, essentially, that hundred and three thousand dollars, that's, that's funds that are not in the town's account? Like, is it basically the town that's funding the entire operation? Is that kind of how it works? And then if they're out money, then that's coming from just the general, the general account?
Through you, your worship. The town is the banker. They do not have their own bank account, so technically it goes through the town's general account, same as police, same as anything else that's done through the town. So all parks and recreation, all our different departments, it's all done that way. So it's considered a department because they are too small to have their own bank accounts, and it's very difficult for them to do that. So yes, we are floating the money, just like we do for SMART. When we were doing the ICIP funding for the transit, we would fund anything that would be the provincial federal waiting on their monies, and we're still waiting on that money. So again, those are monies that the town floats for all that, so it comes out of our general bank accounts. You are correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so we'll move on. Thanks, Chris. Nine point three is report PB zero eight twenty-three. The subject is municipal development charges. It's from Andrew Wilken, our Building Services Manager and CBO. Andrew?
Thank you, worship. Sure, I'll get through this quite as fast as Chris has been moving along today. Yes, PB zero eight point two-three. Recently, in council discussions, budget deliberations, the topic of development charges has obviously come up as well with Bill twenty-three coming into effect on January first, and its related social and financial impacts through Ontario, that legislation, how it affects development charges, and as well as other planning applications, building permit fees, has been a topic of discussion. DCs are just, DCs are one of a number of fees and charges that a developer, homeowner, applicant would be presented with during property development or redevelopment within any municipality. We're no different. The manner in which these fees are collected generally varies from town to town or municipality to municipality. As you'll see through the, the tables that I did provide, fees and chargeout rates for different land use controls and building permit fees are calculated in different manners. Unfortunately, it's not apples to apples. As you can see, it can get it can get quite interesting. Towards the end of my report, did provide some examples so you could see the amount it would cost to develop the same type of property in all the municipalities that I've shown on here. While DCs are a one-time fee paid at the time of building permit being issued, there are numerous other planning and land use control fees that are absorbed by a developer during the process, during the planning process, starting to the actual start of construction. While DCs may or may not exist in certain municipalities, it's important to understand the overall cumulative monetary impact and charges of a developer through the process. To date, as you know, Hanover does not have development charges. To do so, a comprehensive review would need to be undertaken to ensure that the enactment of such a charge and passing of such a bylaw conforms to the Development Charges Act nineteen ninety-seven, which I had a very exciting read over, over the last few weeks. The review, the review process would include, but not limited to, third-party consultation resources and studies. In talking to Scott Taylor about development charges specifically, this typically is about nine-month to a one-year process to put this in place. It, it also goes through any typical planning application. There would be public meetings for such. There's also an appeal period that needs to lapse, similar, similar to a lot of Planning Act controls. Gray County has DCs. As you know, the town collects and remits payment for, for these. The current Gray County Development Charges bylaw summary pamphlet I did include in your report so that you could, you could see what those were. For the purposes of this report, we pulled fourteen municipalities for this report, did not include fourteen in here. This is a lot of information, and just thought it might be too much information, so I picked out five. So there's six comparables in here for the reference of this report. As indicated previously, it's important to note not all charges and fees are relevant to each application. However, most are utilized through a complete development process at one time or another. As we work towards the end to see through an example, it may hopefully make a little bit more sense. So in your first chart here under development charges, I'm not going to go through all the charts. We show upper tier and lower tier development charges. So upper tier being the county, lower tier, you know, being the town of Hanover or whichever municipality I've shown on the chart. So that is our first chart example. Based on the five municipalities, Hanover obvious, obviously has the lowest DCs, as there aren't any. We only collect for the county. Currently within Gray County, Hanover, Georgian Bluffs, and Chatsworth do not have lower-tier charges and only collect county DC. I did not include those other municipalities in this chart. I just didn't feel it was relevant as I started to, started to work through it. Your next chart you will see is building permit fees. This is what I meant by not apples to apples. We keep a fairly streamlined approach in Hanover, whereas, you know, we use a cost per square foot or a value based on construction. As you will see in a lot of other municipalities, it's typically a minimum plus plus building square footage type of construction. So you know, it can potentially get confusing if you're not sure, you know, what's what, but I, I think we keep a streamlined approach that works well. These fees are calculated and developed over time by the municipality, by each municipality, with the use of historical data as well as departmental needs and estimated cost expenditures. Based on the municipality surveyed, Hanover residential building fees typically usually fall within the average of the municipality's permit fees. And again, I'm just specifically talking about building permit fees itself as you work through the matrix and you start to do the math. With respect to commercial, institutional, and/or industrial permit fees, the cost of such a permit in Hanover generally falls into the upper third of surveyed municipalities. Again, this is an estimate as fee structures per square foot costs and cost of construction are calculated in different manners. A retail store of five thousand square feet, we may be in the upper third there. An industrial building in an industrial park at twenty-five thousand square feet, maybe we're no longer in the upper third. To try to make a comparative, I had to pick a number. I had to pick some numbers so that there was some sort of reference. One note with the use of the cost-construction method that we use in a lot of cases for permit calculation, the cost of construction is important to be justified. A lot of times, that originally comes from who's applying for the permit. You know, if, if you're not careful or not up to date on, on unit rates, they could say it's worth hundred thousand dollars. It could be actually worth three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The town's current building fees have not increased in several years. Based on the data collected and as you see in the chart, a review of building permit fees should be computed, should be completed for future implementation consideration, regardless of what direction council wishes to proceed on the development charge aspect of things. Your next chart is planning applications. Again, to show a full cost of what a development would cost, I just thought it would be relevant to have some of that information in there, as again, it's, it's related to the next chart that we're going to touch on. With the town's current fee structure, fifteen hundred dollars for each residential unit and five hundred dollars from each new apartment unit is transferred to the Investing in Hanover Reserve Fund, where it will be used toward developmental needs for the town. The following amounts have been allocated to this fund most recently, ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-two and fifty-four thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-one. This has been the town's procedure to, to allocate revenues that can be used for potential development. And then we get to the comparison examples here. So examples below have been calculated based on the interpretation of the respective municipalities' fees and a total estimate which will be collected during the entire planning and building process. So here's a comparative chart. As you can see in example A, under the total fees, the, the cost of a fifteen hundred square foot home, all in, we are the least expensive, at about eighteen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand dollars. Obviously, the difference of that, a lot of it being development charges, and specifically to the comparisons here is lower-tier development charges that other municipalities are charging. With Bill twenty-three, potentially, the development charge portion could be off- With Bill twenty-three, potentially the development charge portion could be offset and not collected. We haven't seen that yet, but technically attainable housing or affordable housing is not just. Tied to multi-residential units. It could, you could build an affordable house. And charge an unaffordable rate and that would not be subject to development charges. We have not seen or heard of an agreement like that, but that technically, you know, could be something that could be seen down the road. The second, the second item is the cost of construction for a commercial building. Again, we just estimated the cost at one point four million. Declassification, declassification being the Ontario Building Code classification of the building. And we noted that it requires an official plan and is only by law amendment. As you work through that example. We are the. We're in in the middle technically, we're. We're the third lowest of six and as you can see, the development charges really push a number of these developments up quite quite high. Yeah, and just again, just to clarify, development charges, if it can't be collected, it's pretty easy to just take the line items out and. Subtract that and you kind of see, you know, where the numbers fall. As previously noted. This information is provided in response to council's request with respect to Gray County municipalities with the DC by law. And a financial comparison and consideration for all fees associated with the planning and building process. For this report itself, there are no financial implications to this report. The link to the strategic plan is economic development and sustainable municipal operations. And the recommendation is that this report PB eight dash twenty-three municipal development charges be received as information. And I will answer your questions.
Thank you, Andrew, for putting that report together. A lot of good information. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Deputy Mayor Dickert.
I give you worship and thank you, Andrew, that that is something I've been looking forward to seeing is just how we do compare with our. Neighboring communities and across Gray County as well as I see some of them outside of Gray County. Does the fact, you know, to me, when I read this, it appears that. Our per square foot charge for a building permit is higher than than some of the others. So does the fact that we get those dollars. Collected under the building permit fee, give us more flexibility in what we can do with those dollars after, because as I understand it. Money collected through development charges are very prescriptive as to what you can do with them. So. Does this approach give us more flexibility with those dollars?
Through your worship. In short, no, I don't think it would give us much more leeway with to spend those dollars for I. Maybe to turn to Chris for some assistance on the the investing in Hannover fund that, you know, where where those dollars go to and. Potential for its use.
Through you, your worship. It was stated that when you do the building permits, it has to be exactly what is required. To cover all your costs. So what we're saying at the time, we we collect enough to cover our wages and stuff and and all the other. Items that are required, but we also have enough in there that we can put money aside. It used to be a thousand dollars for every residential. Then it was switched to fifteen hundred about three years ago because that we were getting more and more development. And then now we're getting apartment buildings as well coming on. So then that was added for five hundred dollars. Because our rates are much higher than the other ones are in the surrounding area. But again, we don't collect. The development charges. So do we get enough? We're only getting fifteen hundred. Whereas if you compared us to. Was it West Gray? They're they're doing four thousand. So we're only getting fifteen hundred per house with our rates. And they're getting a four thousand on the development charges plus the regular rates. But we have to be careful on what we actually put in our building permit fees because they have to be sustainable. And provide all the fees that are required for the actual expenses incurred. And I don't think we can use the transfer to investing Hannover as part of our expenses towards that.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Deputy Mayor. You're correct, you know, this. What you can charge for a development charges is very specific and it's outlined in the Development Charges Act, like some examples. Water supply services, wastewater services, roads, policing, fire protection. As you work through a comprehensive review with a third party, those start to get worked out and that's really generally. Why the length this of the study takes so long is really developing all that information and understanding which percentage that we would be allowed to. Put into a development charge and receive and how it'd be dispersed at a later date. That is all that the the breakdown is provided. Just that for an example, as it would be in Gray County's pamphlet I provided, provided a percentage breakdown of where those charges go. Additionally, that bylaw needs to be amended every five years. I know in Gray County's instance, they 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 go back out for an RFP every five years. To update that bylaw and make any changes that they see that they need to make at that time as well.
Oh, thank you for those answers. So what I'm actually hearing though is is maybe our approach is maybe more restrictive than what the development charges are. Because development charges does take a look at that bigger picture, your water towers, your policing and and everything, whereas investing in in the. In the Hanover Fund is is a narrower scope of what we can actually use those funds for. Has there, can I go on to a second? Is there a an opportunity that you could combine? Development charges with the with our upper tier, like could they? Do this, you know, perhaps this is something that could be looked at from a county level that, you know, right across the county that. Rather than everybody spending the money to do this. Bylaw investigation and the consultants, is this something that could be done across the county?
Through your worship, I I don't believe so. I would have to read the prescribed requirements into the Development Charges Act, but. I believe the municipality itself would have to undertake this similar to what the what the county has already done. On your first question, I would say. You're right, you know, the Building Code Act states, you know. What permit fees can be or not what can what can be, but you know, essentially what it's to cover and what. Can be brought out of that fee, development charges could is is much more broader and in general into what we can allocate those funds for. Just to, just to confirm that.
Thank you. And and just when I looked at the last chart that you would supply there, the construction of fifteen hundred square foot house. Typically, you know, if someone was building a house in one of our subdivisions. You wouldn't have the OP zoning amendments or the consent fees, would you? It would simply be the development charges plus the building. Permit fee and when when I just. Tried to simplify it in my own mind there, I looked and I compared West Gray with us and and it looked to me like it would cost twelve thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars to build a. House in Hannover versus fifteen thousand two eighty-three in West Gray. Is that a fair summary?
And through your worship and to get to that, you. Can you explain how you worked that math through just briefly? Uh, yes, you might very, you might very well be right. And yes, to your first point. For somebody to go to a vacant lot in town, if we had many. To build a single-family dwelling. Yes, a lot of these planning applications may not be required. However, some of them may have already been completed in the past where, you know, those funds were received through a process, maybe not at the time of the build, but. Ten years ago or or something along those lines, perhaps some of those funds were received, just not as part of. A current build if the zoning is already in place or an OP is in place. That's correct.
So I basically I just backed out the the OP and the the consent fee and the cash and the parkland numbers. Because the county one applies to both, doesn't matter whether we're in Hannover or whether we're in West Gray. And so basically, West Gray is has forty-two hundred dollars more coming in on the development charges side. But a little bit less coming in on the permit, the actual building permit side. So that's where I came up with that that difference. So, you know. Just a quick number, almost three thousand dollars less expensive to build a house in Hannover than it is just from the permits alone. So that's a fair summary.
Through your worship, that that sounds fair if that's what you did, yeah.
So I guess, you know, we need to decide then whether these development charges. Are something we need to look at because there is going to be an advantage and and more places where we can spend that money versus. Doing it all through the through the building permit, you know, perhaps the building permit fee doesn't have to increase, but the development charges would give us better flexibility. To support the growth of the town and all the infrastructure that has to go with it.
Yeah, through your worship, I think, like I said before. Regardless of what the direction is on development charges, I think. I think a an in-house review is required for the building permit fee regardless, you know, whether we introduce development charges. Perhaps that negatively changes our building permit fee in terms of, you know, be being less onerous. If that, if that makes sense, if we're collecting more on a development charge, perhaps the building fee fee portion itself, perhaps. Goes down, perhaps it's unrelated. I haven't looked that far into it yet, but. But yes, I think an introduction of any charge will likely affect ones that are already in place.
Yeah, thank you. And then again, thank you for that information. It's something I've looked forward to having and being able to look at and certainly. Great food for thought as we move forward. So thank you.
Counselor Hawking.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Andrew, for the comprehensive report. I I am a supporter of development charges because I feel that. A a new residence should contribute to the services that municipalities have charged other people over the years. So having said that, and Deputy Mayor made the point about a home being cheaper. In what are cheaper in Hannover than in West Gray by a certain amount. I'm not so sure that that. That difference in the cost of the of the building is transferred to the person purchasing the building or the house. And I'm I'm just going to ask you, Andrew, from. To simplify this, I'm going to compare the city of Own Sound to the city of Hannover or the town of Hannover, pardon me. Both in the county gray, both have to pay county development charges. Am I correct to assume if we compared all of the categories? That a fifteen hundred dollar square foot home in Own Sound, the municipality would. Would accrue fourteen thousand dollars approximately for every home. And if in Hannover, we say sell an average of. Or we build about an average of three thirty homes per year, we're missing out on half a million dollars. Based on the total of the total fees between the two municipalities. Am I correct in the in that assumption? I took fourteen thousand times thirty, oh forty-two thousand, maybe, sorry. Four hundred and twenty thousand rather than. What I said is originally, I guess my point is. Well, I've made it that new residents need to contribute to our police services, our rec department, our roads. Our water services, et cetera. And I think that was the premise of the development charge all along. I'd I'd like to know, and I guess. You're like me, this is way beyond before us, what the reasoning was why the municipality forego a development charge way back. Be interesting. To find out the the rationale behind it. Because it seems like the majority of the municipalities in Gray County, because you said there's only three. Adopted the whole development charges approach. And then when you get over to North Wellington, my goodness gracious, that is outrage. I I'm not saying we go that far, but. Maybe, maybe Chris could give us a historical perspective of. No, okay. I saw the body language. Anyway, I've made my, I've made my point. Thank you, worship.
Yeah, through your worship, there's a lot of files in my office that I haven't been through yet. Maybe there's some information in them. Yeah, like I, like I've sat up here and said before and I'm, you know, who was in the chair before me, you know, really. The comment was our, you know, our building permit fees were a little bit higher, you know, whether it made up some of that difference or it didn't, or that was the intent. Or that's not what the intent was, you know, I can't really speak to the past, but you know, as you work through this example, it's pretty obvious, you know, maybe at one time our building permit fees. Were, you know, in the top two for municipalities around us, you know, they haven't changed in some time, you know, everybody else maybe just. Caught up. Building departments, planning departments, you know. Really, if it's if if you're recovering costs on a lot of that stuff, you know, it's just everything's went up. So, you know, really, the the fees and charges have gone up as well. For whatever reason, and I don't know if Chris wants to speak historically on this, but you know. I I would just say it's, I I said several years, it's been quite a few years since our building permit fees haven't changed. So until until, you know, really a background was done like this. I I would have had a hard, I have a hard time explaining why that is, but I think this kind of puts into perspective where we're at now relative to everybody else. And this helps us kind of develop as the rest of the year moves forward into rates and fees for twenty twenty-four potentially.
Thank you, Andrew. Am I corrected in my interpretation of what development charges are meant to be?
Development charges are meant to, you know, reinvest and 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 be used towards development, whether that be updating infrastructure or. You know, fire protective services or police service or wherever that may be. And however, that's broken down. That's the intent of a development charge. I I'm not trying to question your math, but I'm not a hundred percent sure how you work through that. I I guess just in in. A short equation, you know. Own Sound is eight thousand dollars in lower tier development costs that are collected that are not from that we do not collect. In a typical house. So if we had thirty homes at eight thousand dollars, that's a quarter of a million dollars, not half, but. But regardless, there's that's a that's an amount of money that another municipality is collecting, this amount of element that potentially we are not right now.
So Andrew, is it correct to say that with Bill twenty-three municipalities are not allowed to charge development charges? Is that what Bill twenty-three is coming out with?
Through your worship. Simply yes, but really it's tied to the type of development, right? It won't, it won't affect a commercial space or. An industrial space or a single-family dwelling. Really, it needs to meet, it needs to meet the attainable or affordable piece. Really is what it's tying to. In addition to not being able to collect for site plant control up to ten units and just. You know, limiting the conservation authorities comment and fees related to that. So. Really, right now, that's what we're seeing Bill twenty-three revolve around the housing. Piece specifically and specifically the the affordable slash attainable. Part of that. That's what it is right now. However, understanding that, you know, we've been told in April, there's another update coming out. In relation to Bill twenty-three and that'll probably provide, you know, more.
Thank you. Other questions, Counselor Cable?
Thank you, worship. I would like to see us proceed with some further investigation around development charges. I think that we know that new growth brings new revenue and and that's fantastic. But we also know that there's significant expenses that have to be paid for growth. And I think unfortunately, we're kind of behind the curve here. We're now at the point where we're putting in significant dollars for a growth, whether that's the water tower or the. Sewerage treatment plant that needs to upgrades and and we just don't have the dollars sitting there. So really, it's our current residents that are going to be. Paying the burden of 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 those upgrades. And so I would like to see us investigate this a little bit more. If it ends up being four thousand dollars per house and we have thirty houses, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars extra a year that we didn't currently have. So. I would like to see us take a look at this further and I believe in Brockton's bunch of discussions, they had a similar conversation and we'll be doing something similar. So I think we'd be in line with our neighbors as well.
Thank you. Other comments? Counselor Fleet.
Thank you, worship, and thank you, Andrew. I'm just wondering if we stay at this status quo and increased our fees. And I look at. Cash and Lou for Parkland, I think we're low on that. And then look into moving into fees, but. There hasn't been an increase in some years, you're saying. So is this the time to? Put in some increases and then look down the road to a different way of doing things like fees?
Through your worship. As I alluded to, I think this information report, you know. Clearly identifies that there there probably is. It probably is a time to look at potentially increasing some of our fees that are currently in place. There, there probably is, um, it probably is a time to look at potentially increasing some of our fees that are currently in place right now. Um, but again, if there's, if the direction ultimately is to keep looking. Potentially to move towards a development charge, I, that will affect potentially some of the rates and fees. It will not maybe affect some of the planning fees, whether that's subdivision agreement or consent application or, or some of those things. But in terms of building permit fee, you know, there, there may be a correlation tied into the development charges that. You know, really kind of need the whole, I think we need the whole picture to make a, a proper uh analysis of what maybe that increase or potential decrease. Maybe depending on what we decide.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, other comments? Chris, go ahead.
Since you asked me before. My understanding previously was that um it was a one-stop shop, come to Hanover, we can get everything done, red tape has been removed. There was no DCs at the time. And then the county brought in DCs, I think about ten years ago, maybe. I'm not sure how long ago. And at that point, um, it was the decision that it was an attraction tool not to put DCs in. Because we were all fighting for the same industrial people to come in and build in our different areas. So that was. Considered an attraction tool not to do that. And that's at that time where they would say with the building permits, because our rates were higher at the time. We could use some of that money. However, I do agree that DCs are great because right now our investing in hammer does not cover water. Does not cover sewer, does not cover all those other costs. It's basically just a tool to put there in case we have to develop somewhere and we need extra money. But that's, that was the rationale back then. It was supposed to be an attraction tool and, and removal of red tape.
Andrew and then Sherry.
Oh, thank you, worship. Yeah, and further to that, you know, when you, if development charges are, were to be introduced, if that's, you know. You don't, you, you can only put them in on the residential component. It doesn't have to go on a commercial if you're worried about, you know, potentially attracting. Commercial or industrial development. Uh, Gray County, I, there is an error in my report. Um, in the, the total fees on the commercial build, I have zero dollars. For uh Hanover and West Gray for the total development charges collected. Uh, that's actually not the case. There is a, a commercial. Development charge that has just been introduced in twenty twenty-three for, for commercial by the county. Um, that's brought in on a percentage basis. I, I believe it's. Eight or nine dollars a square meter currently, and it will increase twenty-five percent or twenty percent over the next four or five years, working its way up to about thirty-five dollars a square meter. So again, it, you, you, you don't have to provide, you don't have to uh have development charges for every type of. Development, you can decide, you know, what that may be.
I was just going to note that um, you know, should council wish to proceed with further investigation that that might be a good. Uh, suggestion for strategic plan conversations. So if that comes out as a priority, then, then it would be identified accordingly. Uh, with staff following through with an action plan.
Go ahead, April.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to add one more consideration here, and that is the CIP. Um, just furthering the conversation on commercial development. Um, those type of investments usually when they call, that's the first question they ask, what are your development charges, right? So it is an attraction tool um in that regard, but we, as if we open this up, we will have to look at the CIP because. Um, in our CIP right now, we know that um applications can apply to the county for DC deferral. And we had uh left that out because we didn't have development charges, so we would have to open that up again. And that is a potential though to offset or to grant uh DCs back through the CIP. If that's the direction we choose to go to. So I just wanted to offer that as a consideration in these discussions.
Thank you. Um, Andrew, a further comment or not?
Yeah, okay. Um, through your worship, just, you know, just trying to uh. Figure out, so I had an idea of what the cost of such a, an RFP for consulting. For maybe, and it, it sounds like maybe in the range of fifty or sixty thousand dollars to do such a study. Um, if, if that was the direction. Additionally, uh, you know, if, if council would like more information on development charges and potentially, you know. The process and what exactly could be charged for and what could be in it. You know, we can provide a report to council with some additional information on development charges specifically. If that, if that helps prior to potentially moving forward uh beyond that, but. Certainly not trying to direct where we're going.
Okay, sounds good. Good discussion. I think um the CAO had a good comment that during our strategic planning exercise. Um, it could be part of the discussion and then prioritize it, whether it's number one or number five on the list, whatever. And then at that point, depending where it is and the timing, whether it's one year, two years down the road, we would. Have a report come to council before we go any further. Sound okay? All right, very good. All right, nine point four is the uh Hanover Police Services Board meeting minutes and the first one. Uh, nine point four point one is January twenty-seventh meeting minutes. It was a closed session. So I will not highlight that. Nine point four point two is February twenty-first meeting minutes. Uh, during that meeting, the joint um. The Joint Board Training, which we had scheduled was uh canceled because of freezing rain. Our presenters were coming from the GTA. Area in Burlington and they would have been driving through uh some bad weather. It hasn't been rescheduled yet. We have three board members attending the Zone Five meeting, which is tomorrow, and it is being held virtually, which is good. And we, the board did discuss the Random Acts of Kindness Day where um you'll remember police fire and council members uh. Handed out uh free coffee and it was well received and created a lot of awareness. And I do want to thank Tim Hortons for donating the coffee. Um, another item, police board information is posted on the town website and it's also posted on the police services website. So to avoid duplication and increase efficiency, we're only, only going to post on the police website. But there will be a link on the town website that will take you directly to that site. And finally, um, the chief was the guest speaker at the Probus Club meeting and the. Um, Hanover Police Service members also attended the chamber luncheon to meet members of the business community. Both events increase awareness, allow people to interact with the police and build community relationships. And the final set of minutes, February twenty-third was also a closed meeting, but open for questions if anyone has any. Seeing none, I'll move on to item point nine five, item nine point five. And uh, that's nine point five one and nine point five two. Um, these are the Soggy Mobility and Regional Transit Meeting Minutes, otherwise known as SMART. And Deputy Mayor Dickert will highlight those minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Um, our February third meeting, we did elect the, a new president and vice president. Uh, six of the nine members on that board are, are new, so uh there was uh some time spent on introductions, trying to get to know each other and uh just uh. Where some priorities are, so that was uh time well spent. Our twenty twenty-three budget for municipal contributions will remain as invoiced and any budget changes that uh are coming forward will be. Take from reserves or cost reallocations. Um, we continue to work with the GTR on a service agreement for their accessible transit needs. We will be doing a strat plan update as well on March twenty-fourth. We have some, our day set aside for that. We've worked on better defining who is eligible for service. Uh, a taxpayer and a resident are both eligible for service. It was a bit of a gray area with a taxpayer lived outside the area where they still eligible for service, like would we drive to London to pick up someone that uh. Just owns property here. So we define that and uh you need to be within our twenty kilometer catchment zone. So uh, there are actually some people who own property in one of the municipalities, but they've, you know, now moved to a long-term care home or something like that. So they are still eligible. We have one gentleman that lives in Own Sound, even though they're not a member, but. Where he has his property is within our membership of boundaries. So uh, just an example for everyone's understanding. Uh, we moved on to the operational report. Uh, we looked at our vehicle driver availability and driver expectations. Total rides uh in October were two thousand one hundred and eighteen, November two thousand one hundred and ten. And one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven in December, as we all remember, December had a. Bit of a stormy session there around a busy, typically busy time for Smart, so uh ridership was down a bit there. Overall, for twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven rides. Of which Hanover made up four thousand six hundred and nine of those rides. So uh, a, a big portion of the work that Smart does, does. Is generated from Hanover. And I'll just move on to the next, which was the uh, the Soggy Mobility Update. And it's simply a report, an overview of what Smart is and what they do. We do have three funding streams, which uh Chris alluded to earlier tonight. It's the user fees, municipal contributions and the MTO gas tax. And. My paper's unstuck here. Municipal contributions are based on a, excuse me, a calculation losing, using population and ridership. Thirty percent is population, seventy percent is the users. And our fees to uh, for the users are two dollars plus fifty side, fifty-five cents a kilometer. With a minimum of seven fifty per ride, and that's for one of our, our smallest vehicles. If you get into the nine passenger or thirty passenger, it's different, but uh. For the typical van, that's the way the uh cost is calculated. And added to that is if you make multiple stops, they do add two dollars and fifty cents for each multiple stop that you might make on your trip. We have a current fleet of eighteen vehicles. Our drivers are dispatched using the Nova system on their mobile devices. Uh, SMART is the largest MTO-supported specialized transit service in Ontario. And uh SMART continues to work on possible synergies with others in the area such as Home and Community Sports Services. Uh, to try and to, you know, avoid duplication, minimize cost and create the best service possible for those needing specialized transit. If there's any questions, I would be glad to take them.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any comments or questions? I was um quite interested to see that it is the largest specialized transit service in Ontario. It's uh, it's good to know. All right, uh, nine point six point one and nine point six point two is the Soggy Municipal Airport Commission Meeting Minutes. Counselor Hawking.
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, the special meeting was on January tenth and it was a single issue meeting to deal with the budget of twenty twenty-three. And I think the minutes adequately capture the discussion that ensued among commissioners. On January the twentieth. We, was our first uh meeting of the new commission. And we had a guest, Mike Walsh from Edwards Fuels. Who gave us a historical perspective of aviation fuel sales at the airport. Uh, as you know, um, revenue uh from fuel sales is our second most uh. Important source of revenue next to the municipal contributions. Uh, another item in the, in there is that we're currently in um. In discussion with Ontario Hydro uh on the expansion of airport hangars and which will require. The, the purchase of a new transformer because we have run the limit on the existing one. Um, friends of the Soggy Airport, and I made mention this before, are hosting a counselor information day on May the thirteenth. Details to be firmed up at our March meeting. A few items to mention under new business. Um, we hosted a pilot information night and that was basically um. An opportunity to talk about our draft budget, talk about our, our different um. Items moving forward and also get feedback from the pilots on how we can improve communication among the group. We finalized the template for lease rates. This took a long time. If you'd read the minutes, we passed something back, I think Ju, June meeting of twenty twenty, which was um. Unclear, and now we have uh a template in place, which. Really is an asset because it now compares apples with apples. We had different lease rates, we had different. Uh, square footage calculations, so now we have a template in place so that when the lease comes due. They're all follow the same square footage and when a new hangar is built. That hangar also complies to uniform standards. We increased the landing fees of commercial aircraft to a hundred and fifty dollars per landing uh in previous um. Uh, landing fees policy. The, there was no landing fee as long as the aircraft fueled up, but now we're adding a hundred and fifty dollars. And the reason is that we did a survey of all, of surrounding airports. And um, we are in compliance with um airports in their vicinity. And then we had a brief in camera session. I'm open to any questions on those two sets of minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Hawking. Any questions or comments? I don't see any. We'll move on. Uh, item nine point seven, this is the Ontario Senior of the Year Award. This award is given by a municipality to recognize an outstanding senior who, after age sixty-five, enriches the social. Cultural or civic life of the community. So for eligibility, so you have to be at least sixty-five years of age, a resident of Ontario. A living person who has made their community a better place to live. And nominated by a municipality. So if you know of anyone with the. Those uh. Traits, please pass it on to me and I'll open that up to the viewing public. There are people out there in organizations that we don't know about. If you want to submit a name to me, you're more than welcome because uh. It's uh, it's important that we honor our seniors. All right, uh, moving on, we're on to item ten, planning and other meetings. These uh dates are listed on this agenda and of course on our website. Item eleven is dates to remember and announcements. The next regular council meeting is Monday, March the twentieth at four P M. The next committee of the whole meeting is Monday, April third uh. At four P M. And at this time, I'll ask if there's any notices of motion. Counselor Hawking.
Thank you, I don't have a notice of motion, but I just want to. Um, my error not informing um Vicky that the Soggy Municipal Airport Commission will meet on. Wednesday, March the twenty-ninth as opposed to the fifteenth that appears in the um. Planning and other meetings, my apology.
Thank you for that. Okay, um, no notices of motion. Item thirteen is closed meeting and we do have a closed meeting this afternoon. It's been recommended that the council of the town of Hanover. Uh, meet in closed session in order to receive advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege. Including communications necessary for that purpose with regard to Westario Power Reorganization. I need a mover and seconder. Deputy Mayor Dickert and Counselor Hawking, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So we'll just wait. Read my rate. Oh, yes. Is it gonna save recording? Okay, we are now in open session. We are reconvening at five twenty-three P M. And I am confirming that Hannover Council had gone into closed session in order to receive advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege and including communications necessary for that purpose with regard to Westario Power Organization, Reorganization. And coming out of that meeting, it's, we do have a motion for open session. And I will read it and then ask for a mover and seconder. Whereas the council of the town of Hannover at their meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, adopted motion one forty-four dash twenty-one to authorize and approve the reorganization of Westario, Westario Power Incorporated. And whereas on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, the Westario Board of Directors communicated that the reorganization of Westario Power Incorporated has been paused until further notice. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Hannover rescind motion one forty-four dash twenty-one in its entirety. Deputy Mayor Dickert will move it and Counselor Hawking will second it. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So that is the last item on the agenda. And I will, well, not quite the last. I will need a mover and a seconder to adjourn at five twenty-five. Counselor Cable and Counselor Hudson, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much.